All the meeting to order. Day three, I'm calling the meeting to order. First order of business is to look at the minute or review the minutes from all last two meetings. Technically created with a joint meeting. A Lincoln board meeting and then a second Lincoln board meeting. Let's do the joint first since that came first. Um, same one thing sorted out.
Just change the, the, what are they, voluntary number? We just say the voluntary estimate.
Okay, okay. What was yours? Lines forty-five and forty-six. I voted in favor. So it says you should say Jack Daly, Scott Rice, OJ Robinson, and Gil Rian voted.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
No, no.
I made.
And OJ.
That was the only one I had.
Oh, I didn't catch that. I didn't hear anything yet.
Did you?
Make motion to, to approve the joint board meeting and it's a twenty-two minute.
Right, now the same night, the regular meeting. You have anything on that?
I did not.
I did not.
I did not.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Sir. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and then the meeting where we just said tax rate?
I had nothing.
There's nothing.
Make a motion to approve those as presented.
Sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Maybe a non-public. Make a motion to approve non-public as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye. Jane, awesome job. Forty-five minutes there.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, who's challenged?
Or that line. Unless you attached it.
What? Let's go over this.
Well, we. Alright, and then we have a tax warrant.
No, you already voted on it in the last meeting, but it said the tax rate, that's just formality about signing the warrant.
Is that the right tax rate?
Yes, four dollars and sixty-six cents. Right?
Yeah. It's like twelve sixty-six, like two cents left.
Alright, next one, the agenda is the land purchase. From the state of New Hampshire.
Yes, so, uh, Deputy Chief McKinley and I have been in contact with a gentleman at DOT, his name is David Rodriguez. Uh, he reached out to us in regards to the emergency access grant and also the state purchase of the land. So, as we get involved with a little bit more specifics in regards to the purchase and also the ramp. He had mentioned to us that, um. First of all, DOT is very excited about the option of a rent. They love the idea, they think it's great for the North Country, they think it's great for Trupet, or it's for mutual partnerships, all that good stuff. They are one hundred percent on board and they say, um, it should be a relatively easy lift on there. The one caveat to that is, is that they are not in favor or they will not allow it to happen on the state of New Hampshire parks. They would like it to happen as an extension of Polygrove. They'd like to.
Oh.
Have it come straight out from the end of the extension of Polygrove onto the highway. They said that is the only way it will happen. They say, first of all, the state of New Hampshire parcel of land, there are federal regulations in regards to that that will not allow us to have access to the highway from that piece of land. So there's no opportunity for it to happen on that land. The only way it will happen is if it comes from the Polygrove.
If they send us a copy of that federal rights law returning it.
We would have to do it at the time of the purchase of the sale of the parcel. We would get that information during our due diligence period of itself. Um, there's really no way to lock that off from the public. Before the end of the vote. There would be, there would definitely. There's a driveway at the end of the road. Yes, they would do, they would install, they would, you know, they would construct a further extension in a driveway area and it would, it would be gate. Well, yeah. Yeah. Okay, gotcha. Similar to like the one that's off the highway, um, in like Manchester or. Back at the tree line, it's gonna have to be beyond the tree line. I'm, I don't know the specifics, we didn't get into specifics, but they, that truly, that's, that's the only way it is a vote. I understand that thinking about it, it's just something that's gonna be a weird transition. Sure. But good, that's called good news though. All good news, so I guess. My question is, if that is something that we are going to move forward with and get DOT support on and the governor's office support on, that's how we got someone there. Is, do we want to move forward with the purchase of the sale of that, of the, of the purchase of that property for the tune of a hundred thousand dollars? If it's really not gonna be beneficial to us for the access grant. Uh, our concern was, and I think our original thinking was, it was potentially a spot for the fire department to go in the future, if we ever were going to construct this substation. But in speaking with the PD and the fire chief, he's not gonna be able to get a turning radius on that side of the building onto the highway. Uh, if, if the highway, I know what you're saying, you know, that acts at the highway at this point, it's coming from that area, he can't take a right-hand turn with a turning radius with the trucks. So we were thinking, if we wanted to have a potential of the future of the fire department in that area of town, we also have this rather lot, other larger parcel that we could create an actual. Loop around, so we would have a turning radius. I think it's a little narrow-minded. The end of that parcel, if you go down Polygrove, and trucks, fire trucks back in and out of garages on main roads all the time. There's no reason why they couldn't back in and out of a garage off of the end of Polygrove. It's not backing in and out, it's taking the right-hand turn to get on the emergency access to get on the highway. If they pulled out of there, heading towards those houses, they could pull either right or left. I'm talking about right here. Coming out here, then turning, how is, turning onto the highway? How is that gonna be different from just making a left or a right, another right? I mean. They're making like a three-point turn? No, I'm saying if you pull out, you're back into a garage here. And you pull out, you're either gonna go left or right, if you go right, you just take another right, it's no different. They're all not giving returns. I don't understand what you're saying, I'm gonna not be able to take a right-hand truck.
Let's, let's forget about the interstate for a minute. If the fire department were at the end of that lot, like between the, between the police, new police station and the interstate, could they pull out under? Followed vote and turn left?
I, I mean. I, I would think so.
I mean, it'd be the same thing as coming down Mansion Hill Road and turning left on follow. Right.
I don't think, I mean, we don't have to decide what they're gonna do. No, no, I think it's, I guess the whole point is, is do we still want that parcel up between the road? I think either way, it's a benefit for the future, where it's attached, that parcel in there is possible to grow. Okay, it would be kind of, we have the opportunity, I think we wish not to do it, having said that, it should be its own warrant available and the tax.
The other thing too, do we know if the state or the feds have another restriction on there? Just found out there was one restriction, is there another restriction on there that would prohibit potentially, uh, fire trucks?
No, I think when we applied to the state surplus in our application, it did say for future expansion, for potential future expansion. Um, so I don't think it, I don't think it has any, I don't think it has regulations in regards to building, it has regulations in regards to highway. I think.
It is a hundred dollar, um, what they're estimating, the assessed value that's.
They, they, they gave us the assessed value and I think it came in at ninety-seven and that's what the purchase price was going to be for was ninety-seven, but they also want. Um, an additional survey done with certain meets and bounds taken out and whatnot, so we, I think we said a hundred K, knowing that we might need to spend a little money to get, get a bet.
It seems expensive, I know land is expensive in this town, that's kind of not shit, peace hold.
I don't disagree.
I mean, is there a necessity to purchase it now, or do we sit, wait, see what happens in the future?
I can't imagine anyone else. However, traditionally, land doesn't go down.
No.
And it doesn't normally stay the same, you can pay a hundred now or two hundred later.
We're the only ones that are gonna grab it, so.
I don't disagree there, I'd just rather have it at a hundred than two hundred to sell. Choice.
I would say, let's let the voters decide.
I agree.
Let's, let's bring it to the voters, say, you know. Would this be used for future expansion? Yes. Is, is someone else gonna come forward and try to buy it, the state sell it to them? No, possibly. Down it, well, I know someone who'd wanna park some tow vehicles there.
No, I mean, I mean, that'd be a perfect, I think they could just put them off the interstate.
No, seriously, if some family wanted to buy that land. It, it would be a detriment to the, to. Sustained piece of your health.
I said we put it on warrant.
I said we put it on, so, I, they wanted to buy it, they don't, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, like I said, I just wanted to make you aware, we're not.
Yeah.
Cause that, in my mind, I always envisioned the emergency access point to be. Agreed. Public parkway, I think that's how I kind of envisioned it. But, you know, I just wanted to make sure that we still want to. Okay. And I just thought it could be then roughly a hundred, you know, thousand dollars. Do we wanna get an app put on a survey and, like, recording these and all that app? Well, we already have a survey, so I think I was just gonna reach out to Steve Tower, who did the original one, and hopefully it wouldn't be. You know, so that's why I said, I think I'm, I'm almost positive that the purchase price that they gave us was ninety-seven, and I think we just said a hundred or even. Yeah, makes sense though. But I mean, if you wanted to do a hundred and ten or a hundred and three, I think, you know. Like I said, we already have a survey, our relatively recent survey. No, then I think you're good, yeah. You know, and it could end up being a thousand dollars or something, we could. OJ, so. Okay, alright, yeah.
And then you wanna move right into your comment and?
Thank you. Um, so, uh, DOT request for speed limit revale and the speed they are signed, so Nate has identified a permanent unit that meets DOT's specification and has received a quote from CACCO. Which is the company that manufactures them. Um, I wanted to just confirm that we want to wait until we receive feedback from DOT regarding the request to reduce the speed limit before we go ahead and purchase the unit. And then in addition, Nate and I were discussing getting a feeling for a temporary unit, but then we remembered that the PD already has a mobile unit, a temporary. And so we were thinking, is, do we really wanna move forward with purchasing an additional one, or should we just ask the PD and get permission from DOT to put it in that?
Well, police department usually said on the weekends, since they're full of traffic, who won't? Be sure, seen it up there, and consequently, with a meeting that on.
I feel like little purchase their own, or rented their own last year for the year before, so I don't think you've been using that, we do use it for traffic management during like. I'm game, and I think fourth of July. I'm already sharing it, even if it's not in the designated spot here and there, when they need to use it, that's, I don't see, we have one, why would we buy another one? Something to start, right, to get it out there and. If we notice that it's a huge benefit, then it might be worth it to buy another one, but, and I'll talk to Chad, see if we can utilize there.
I would say initially, you'd use the portable green, and, and I would like to hold us on deciding on a permanent one until after we get permission from the state. For the, uh, reduction in speed.
I, I was almost positive that's what we decided upon, cause even if you looked in the minutes, I was just looking in the minutes, it did say that, um. We were gonna wait. It says, OJ suggested that they get pricing for both types of signage and budget for it accordingly, however, to not purchase anything until we hear back from the group.
Good.
Okay, so we'll just hold off for now, but at least we know we got a quote and it meets DOT's.
What, what was the quote, you know?
Uh, it was fifty-five oh-three for the unit itself, uh, but then we would have to get permanent, uh, electricity to it. So we didn't get a quote, we would go off to get a, you know, to pull a line, but that was for the, the unit. So I think we said. Do they have solar ones? Um. Is that not a thing? They do have solar ones, I think, but I think Nate got one for a hardwired one, I'm not quite sure why, um. I can ask him why. I mean, well, I mean, I think if we get, once we get feedback from DOT, then we can. You can find it, I know, we can refine what we're buying. I will say that DOT said we can't have one of the ones with the funny, uh. With the funny design, but not allowed, DOT. Really?
Are all state elements?
Um, well, it's, they gave us examples of like, what's like, not permitted, like yours. A smiley face, so like, they were, and they have to approve it before we can purchase it anyways, but, um. I think they're.
I think the one that just says the speed is gonna be.
And then like this one that was like your speed and then it's like buckle up, they're like, not allowed.
Like the one that says your speed and says it looks like it.
Yeah. The ones that you can get it going as fast, because you know, that thing, you don't forget that. Uh, a lot of them, like, stop. Okay, so we'll hold off on that, but at least we know what we're, kind of, the tentative game plan is. Um, next is Parker Road, no parking signs, so we received a request from Maureen Clark to install no parking signs in the kind of hammerhead turnaround near the end of Parker Road. She had previously given Bill Willie permission to pave that area for fire truck access and turnaround. However, it is now becoming an area where people park to access some of the public trails, I did talk to Nate about that, um, today as well, and he says. Um, that it, it is true that people park there, um, to access things, he said, but that is still part of the town roadway, and that if we wanted to put up signs, he says he's got one in his shop right now, you can get it on. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, and, well, I mean, if we put a no parking sign. We have to enforce it, yes, and where else are they gonna park? Is it going to, I know that road's not super wide, if there's no parking signs where it is, it's wide enough to park, are they gonna be blocking the road?
Technically, that, that's private property on the mall side of the road.
I, yeah.
So they shouldn't be hugging it. I mean, it's just private.
Right, park in the road, like we do on every other street in town.
I'm gonna say, they shouldn't be parking there to go hiking.
Why? I could park in front of your house and go hiking.
You could.
Yeah.
But you'd have to walk down the street to get to a public trail.
Well, I could park in front of the last house on the road on Parker Road and then go hiking.
Where?
Right on the side of the road, or on the road, that's what I'm saying, is that what's gonna happen? If we put up no parking signs everywhere, do we have a bigger problem, is there a bigger issue, before we just go throw the signs up, we probably ought to figure it out. If we put up no parking signs, are they gonna start parking in the road and it's not very wide?
Well, if it impedes traffic, and I mean, that's an issue for the police to, uh, become their tab, or put a notice on the car, or?
I don't disagree, I'm just wondering if we're gonna create a bigger problem, we asked Chad that first, they're the ones that are gonna have to enforce it, and the whole bit. Yeah, I think on the flip side of that, is if we don't try to stop people from parking in that area, she's gonna no longer allow us to have the.
Yeah, the turnaround is on her property, yeah, and that was the request, it said, you know.
It not be parking.
It not be for parking, so, so.
I don't disagree that they can't park there, my concern is, is creating a larger problem.
They, we sold that.
Right.
I mean, we have the same issue of it. The end of the mountain. On that other. Right, but if she denies us access to that turnaround, one, and then it becomes a public safety concern, and then two, people are gonna park on the street, just like you're talking about right now anyways. Just put the signs up like we have. I mean.
I'd say put the sign up.
We can't not put the sign up, that's what I'm saying. But, oh, okay, alright. We have to put the sign up, however. My fear is, my concern is. Okay.
Possessors.
Okay, let's see, yes. Coalition Communities two point oh, so at the annual meeting, uh, the annual meeting for the Coalition Communities was held, uh, October twenty-first, uh. And they went over all the communities, essentially, um, their public school funding and what SWAP would look like in fiscal year twenty twenty-six. So, um, as our school enrollment continues to decrease, Lincoln's share of the excess SWAP would continue to grow. Um, if the state were to require the return of the excess SWAP, Lincoln would be the fourth highest donor town in the state with four and six million returned to the state. So, um, it's important for us to continue in this Coalition of Communities, um, to kind of make sure that we don't return to the, the, the donor town status. Um, I was surprised that we were so high on.
Yes, I knew it was gonna be a million bucks, but. Four highest?
Four highest, Malton Borough, Rye, Wolfborough, and Loomia. So, we, we're up there, we're essentially, we are five point seven percent of all the total SWAP that would be, the total excess SWAP that would be received by the state. That's scary.
How many donor towns, uh, did you know?
Right now, um, there, well, there, there's thirty on the list, but there's also one, two, three, four of us. Twenty-one other communities that are. Incorporated and also be in jeopardy of excess SWAP, because they came into the school system, the local school system, the regional school system. Um, so, it would not be in our best interest to have that. A little bit, but. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, our, our budget for this year is going down because it's not, um, a, a major legislative year for something like this. Um, the budget for twenty twenty-six will go down slightly from, I think we usually contribute around five thousand, this year it's gonna be around three, but it's gonna ramp back up. Uh, twenty twenty-six select board meeting schedule, so in your packets, I put in a tentative, uh, select board meeting schedule, the only readily apparent conflict. Um, will be in September for the Labor Day holiday, so as it gets closer, you know, we can either schedule the meeting for the Tuesday or the next day, or the twenty-third is vacation. Okay. Well, I'm thinking both, and as well, you're home again, but, but, um. Actually, I haven't, I haven't even been here.
So, let's leave that as it is for now, and. I mean, that'll be the last meeting for town meeting. Um, so we should at least meet with.
Well, we'll have a meeting the night before town meeting. Right.
Oh, that's true, yeah, that's true. I'm just saying, we usually move the moderator before the night before.
Before the night, right, you're right. We could always do it the seventeenth of February or something like, you know, put along those lines, I tried to do it both ways, I tried to flip flop it with us meeting on the.
Yeah, no, leave it where you got it, for the, for the vacation week comes up and Labor Day comes up, we'll, we'll, we'll adjust it.
Like I said, when I, when I flip flop it, I'll be hit almost every single one day, holiday, so. Okay. Yeah, I can see that. Yeah. Um. Somewhat, and in addition to that, but, um, it's also in your packets too, I also gave you the, uh, uh, important date calendars for the local officials. Thank you for that. For the twenty twenty-six, uh, town meeting, this is all the planning and land use deadlines and everything to all the, uh, select board and traditional town meeting deadlines as well, so. Um, I have that a lot of times, me too, if anybody would like to consider it. Okay. Uh, numbers, uh, bedroom and bathroom count report, we were able to generate a report of our assessing software. Um, Becky was, I'll give her credit for that, um, she, that has identified the number of bedrooms and bathrooms that we have listed in our assessment records. So for bedrooms, we have eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-five, for full bathrooms, we have seven thousand three hundred and forty-nine, and for half baths, we have nine hundred and three. Nice, and I just saved this, I'm gonna take the, this home, the one that we gave us last week. Okay. And, uh, see what I can figure out in the first.
Do you know? I was looking through the water bill one.
Yeah.
They charge for other rooms besides rooms that have water, like, like your living room.
Living room, yeah, yeah.
You know? One of the ways, like, I know that these houses possibly have salt peaks that have studies and dens and libraries that people sleep in. Under that structure, it'd be the same, it's the same point, it's, it's a bedroom, it's, it's. Where's the bedroom? One point, a bedroom's a point, a library's a point, a den's a point, it's a point, call it what you want.
It's a living room.
You got nine rooms, you got nine quarters. You got nine quarters, yeah, um, you know. That's not the only, I know that this chat pieces along with these, but, uh. Just using their rates, if we instituted this. It would be three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in basically water and sewer feeds, um. Which would then offset all of those costs in the operating budget and possibly the capital budget. I didn't look at what, but the. Yeah, it is.
I thought that's a one.
The way we have it right now.
Yeah.
Water points is a one-time hookup, the way the water bill housing is.
Yeah, well.
Right, right, they're both.
One-time connection fee to connect, and then they have a quarterly water and sewer bill.
Yeah.
So, based on this flat rate, yeah, yeah.
Now. It's an interesting concept, bottom line though, is that. It's not gonna, uh. It's not gonna, uh, incentivize a reduction of water use. Cause you're gonna pay the same for a bedroom, for a living room, for, for the use a gallon or a hundred gallons. And then it, it, just like water meters, it's gonna take the burden of payments from. You know, the three million dollar house, put it on the three hundred thousand dollar house. Because a bedroom in a three million dollar house is gonna be one point, bedroom in a three hundred thousand dollar house is gonna be one point. You, you take the lowering taxes here, you're putting it under the local deal. So I don't think they're gonna go for us. But. It, it's a, it's an interesting concept.
Hmm, yes.
Um. But. What, looking at water bill thing, what that opened my eyes to, we're collecting points on, um, new construction. We could do the same thing as far as the point is a library, a, a den, gym.
Hmm.
Um. Any room.
Yeah, I mean, we, right now, we're only doing the, the rooms that I guess essentially contribute to.
To wat- to water.
So we do.
Like, do they have water?
Right.
And, and so in that room.
Right.
So laundry and.
We do collect a bedroom tap fee or a bedroom fee for, for cell at the water treatment.
Correct.
Um, but you, you're right, that's, we're not collecting for dens and libraries and. You know, spaces such.
That'd be something to explore. Let's do. You know, and the thing is, it has to, obviously has to apply to all new construction.
Hmm.
Whether it's, you know, someone down the street and you're adding a family room or someone who's building a, you know. Four or five million dollar house.
Yes.
Street. Same price. Um. I know there's, there's another thing coming up about impact fees.
Yes.
I think that would be a good conversation to have with, whatever the truth to do with that, but go ahead.
Sure. Um, so, yeah, not in that case. So the, uh, planning board chairman, Paulo, and asked, uh, that I approach the board with the suggestion of potentially making an impact fee assessment committee for us to help determine, um, the best approach to revise our current impact fees. Whether it's implementing new fees through a total fee assessment with, you know, a professional company, a consultant to help us do that. Or if it's just looking at our current impact fees and seeing if they should be increased or tweaked or make some changes to our current fee structure that is not such an elaborate kind of thorough assessment of impact fees. Um, so I told him that I would bring it up at the board level and see if, uh, you know, he would be interested in doing something.
I said last meeting that I would be in favor of doing that, uh, we volunteer the, the board, the board itself chooses to point me to a committee that would deal with that. I think we've got a good basis here, uh, on the city of Lebanon. And I think if we ask around to get other entities that are, other cities of town that have already, uh, had these studies done by the gentleman who was the B C M planning, uh, out of Maine, that, uh, you know, we don't have to reinvent the wheel.
No, and they're making, I mean, his approach to it is very thorough. You know, I mean, it, it, there may be other communities that don't do something as, um. Detail, detail, yeah. Um, and so, you know, it may, and it may be easier for a smaller group to get together than it would be for the planning board as a whole and the select board as a whole to try to come all together and, you know. At least for the, the presentation of options. These are our options, you know.
I, I would agree with Jeff on this. And again, going back to the water bill. Structure, you know, it was just kind of an eye opener for me, like, oh, I guess you don't have to do just kitchens and bathrooms. You could do other types of.
Sure.
Living space.
We could use our current fees that we, you know, impact fees for water and sewer. I think those are our two main concerns, you know, is water and sewer. Do we have concerns for the school and recreation and whatnot? I, I mean, not that we don't have them, but I think our, our top priorities are, are water and sewer in the future. Uh, could we just tweak what we currently have, um, to benefit us without having to go through this, you know, elaborate assessment?
And I think that's a good perspective, cause. I think it would be hard to put an impact fee on much of the relevant town to support, like. Recreation. I don't think a lot of the new home clientele. We can show is, is.
Impact.
Right, it's impacting our recreation across. And that's what an impact is supposed to be.
Right.
What they.
Portionate.
In proportion. And, and I mean, I would think that their recreation, use of recreation facilities. Pretty low. Some do. I mean, I know that, you know, that this, um, community center, kang rixi area, absolute, there's people who do it, but as a percentage. It's, it's pretty low. Um, but by far the, the things that.
Well, and.
Facing this water.
And also with recreation, for the most part, those are, uh, services that we charge a fee for, that we're already collecting revenue from, especially if they're a non-resident. Um, at a higher rate than we are the locals. Um, so it would be harder to, I guess, quantify their direct impact over what we're already charging them for services or for the people, for the use of the kang raft or whatnot.
But again, water and sewer. Especially sewer.
Sure.
But, yeah, I would say that that would be a good idea. Oh. Jeff wants to represent.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know what he was thinking as far as like how many people. I think he was looking for input from, you know, the select board and I think he was gonna take it to the planning board at the next meeting as well to see if that was something that they wanted to do rather than have it be a. You know, because technically impact fees are, are managed by the planning board. Uh. So I think he was, you know, just wanting to see if we were over to the idea.
I, I would say the answer is yes.
Exactly.
You?
Yeah.
Okay, we're in agreement.
Okay, I will let him know and I guess we will. More to come on that. Maybe I'll have him. Take a suggestion on what he thinks that should be. Is it a three-person committee, a five-person committee, is, you know?
Yeah, it can't be like the water committee, which was.
The bigger it gets, the harder it is.
Right, I mean, that was like a free for all, you know, and for what it was doing at the time, it was, I'll be okay. Uh. It, it invited a lot of different perspectives, but it was hard to manage, you know, fifteen people at a meeting.
Yeah. Well, it's just managing schedules too.
Right.
People you have, the, the harder it is to, you know, the dating calendar time, you know, down.
I was just gonna schedule again, I'm putting the dates into my calendar.
Yes.
Uh, February ninth, this will trial. Might be.
So February might be off screwed up then.
Yeah.
And I don't think that'll block February.
That's a bit less, that long. Which we had questioned whether that would be, and that would be day six.
Would it?
I mean, I think it starts on the second, so, right, so it's on the Tuesday.
Yeah, it does. You're right. So that would be the last day. So. Keep it, keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah.
Believe the good.
I agree.
So I just put it in and saw that it was on that day, that's.
Yeah, good.
Yeah.
Right now.
Keep it in mind.
Uh, and then the only other thing I have to this email, I have two more things. The only other thing that I have that's not on my, uh, town management report is, um. We received today at four fifteen, our, uh, final EPA mandate permit. So, oh.
It had a draft, is it much different?
Uh, I, I don't know. I, I guess I got it at four fifteen and a lot of it's kind of a full-on language to me, to be honest.
Yeah.
So I sent it to Ray Corver. I also sent it to H two O Innovations. I have a meeting, Nate and I have a meeting with H two O on Thursday at ten o'clock to go over some improvements, also to talk about, you know, what happened this summer and what we can do to kind of bring, you know, remediate some of that and try to resolve some of those issues, but also we wanna get, uh, a better line of communication going with them as far as to some improvements that need to be happened there, especially if we need to make some changes to our testing and, and whatnot. So, um, hopefully, um, I can't imagine that they're gonna have it, I mean, it's like a fifty-page document. I can't imagine they're gonna have solutions to everything but on Thursday, but at least the conversation will be, will be started. Uh, the permit does take effect, it takes effect on February first of next year. And then the coverage for that permit starts on April first of next year. So we have a little bit of time to get our ducks in the road and make sure that we're gonna meet all the requirements to be able to have an idea of what's it gonna cost us to, uh, to meet those requirements.
Yeah, that does not sound fun.
Um, and then we did receive a, a email from the Mansion Hill HOA. I do see that, uh, Jeff, uh, Delapali is on the Zoom. I didn't know if we wanted to talk about that briefly in public or wanna go into non-public or, um, you know, that would be up to.
I think it might be productive to initiate a conversation in public. You know, I have not even read this.
Okay.
I've seen the, the title and looked at what it's about, but I haven't read it yet. But it might be good to go through that and then have a discussion and, um. I'm not sure we'll come to a decision tonight, but at least you could. Share some thoughts and information back and forth.
Sure. Do you wanna invite Jeff to kind of go over his email a little bit?
I mean, yeah, that would be. Oh, you know?
You should have one in the top.
Yeah. Should be the last.
Oh, the last time.
Actually, yeah, last three days. So Jeff, if you're in line, if you wanna. Speak to us, summarize this, uh, just keep in mind that, that we, you know, we just got this tonight, so we're not ready yet.
Sure, no, thank you very much, Ford. Uh, I will keep it brief as I've been conversing with Karina on this and she was, uh. Precious enough to put us on the agenda for tonight. Uh, so as you know, with the, uh. Mansion Hill condo is working on trying to find ways to mitigate the view of the, uh, tower that is located at the police department property. Um, we did walk the property earlier this summer and discussed some options in terms of fencing and potential tree planting or transplanting, as I should say, to, um, block the view of the police department. Obviously, we know we're not gonna get too much. We're not gonna lose too much of the view of the, uh, the tower itself, but, um. At the time, we had some quotes from, uh, a, a tree company to transplant some trees along the property between Mansion Hill and the police department. And at the time, uh, it, the, the cost seemed very reasonable, which, uh, the town seemed amenable to accepting, uh, for our project. But as we got deeper into the weeds, no pun intended. Uh, we realized that the costs were going to be a little bit, uh, higher than originally anticipated. And part of the reason for that was that, uh, some of the trees in the area to be transplanted uh, would be very difficult to transplant and would actually probably become damaged and not actually survive, um. In the new, in their new location. So, a few of my colleagues on the board, uh, reached out to the same arborist to get some estimated cost for tree transplanting. Uh, and that came in to approximately, uh, twenty thousand dollars plus uh, for a beautification project in between. Police station and Mansion Hill. So. Uh. What we were, Karina brought up a, a great idea and the board is, is quite interested in this is that we have, uh, approximately, I think it's sixteen units at Mansion Hill that are looking to be connected to the town sewer. And that's a project that, that must happen. Um. And we're working on the logistics there. And one of the things that was mentioned was possibly waiving the, uh, sewer connection fees for those units, um, from the town. Which meant that, uh, Mansion Hill would cover the cost to plant the trees and do any sort of landscaping that would be required to separate the town's property from the, uh, Mansion Hill Association. So, uh, I believe that the sewer connection cost is around forty-three thousand. And I respectfully requested a full waiver of those fees in lieu of, uh, Mansion Hill covering the cost to plant the trees, uh, and kind of do what we can to remediate any of the. The view from the police department that is, uh, that abuts the property. I know it was a little bit of a long-winded answer or a long-winded story, but that's kind of the, the gist of the request.
What is the proposed, uh, timeline for this if we were to move forward? This, this be a spring project for both the sewer and the planting?
Uh, for the, for the plantings, we're sort of past our deadline to plant the trees safely. That would likely have to take place in the springtime when the weather, uh, cooperates a little bit better right now. It's just not, uh, not feasible. Uh, as far as the sewer project. You know, as soon as, as soon as possible is, is my guess. I'd have to get more details on that.
I assume there's some engineering that needs to be done with this.
Yeah, Michael, Michael Connor's kind of taking the lead on that project for Mansion Hill. Um, he reached out to me last week or so, um, just wondering kind of what our expectations were as far as. I thought we've stepped up the board level and we don't have any issues with them connecting as long as the sewer, uh, the, the, we could handle the capacity down Mansion Hill on that piece for a row. Uh, we have confirmed that the pipe in the round is ready not to take on the additional capacity. So I made him aware of that. And I kind of gave him the green light. He said he was going to, I believe, that, um. Calder Construction is doing the work for them, so he was going to reach out to Calder to get a quote from them as far as what it would cost Mansion Hill to, to do that work. Um, and then I told him that I'd follow back up with them, circle back around with him, um, just requiring what kind of documentation and kind of what we were gonna need on our level to make sure that we just have what we need to know what was going through the rap. Does anyone think?
Well, I, I think it sounds, um, Jeff, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Um, it sounds like you're still dealing, um, with Green Old Tree State as far as firming up. It sounds like they were going to be there today.
Um, I, I believe that they were there last week.
Always.
To firm up the quote. So we, we did get a, a, a firm quote, which I can, I, I think I did provide Karina, but I can double check that.
That's what's in here, right? Well, the quote that I have is dated nine thirteen.
Yeah, there's a more recent one, which, uh, I can provide.
Well, it sounds like, and correct me if I'm not reading this. Uh, correctly, um, it sounds like the total cost would be about twenty thousand, three hundred dollars based on this.
Is that a question for me or, or for Karina?
I'm sorry, for you, Jeff, yes.
Okay, yes, approximately, uh, I believe by numbers around, uh, yeah, twenty thousand, three hundred.
Twenty thousand, three hundred, yeah. And our cost, the town's cost, um. Would be roughly, we're estimating forty something thousand, oh, forty thousand.
Forty thousand, eight hundred.
Eight hundred.
Or.
Not the town's cost, but Mansion Hill's cost.
Oh, the, the sewer connection fees, I believe, were forty-three thousand.
Yeah.
Two hundred. Based on sixteen units, would be sixteen kitchens and thirty-two bathrooms, right?
Uh, there, there, yeah, there are two bedrooms, two thousand units.
I didn't do bedrooms, I just took out kitchens.
Yeah. It was forty-three two. I think it was forty, it was forty-three two.
I don't have that. But I mean, you know, if we were going to do this, I could see dollar for dollar, uh, thought giving away twenty more thousand dollars of the town funds. Uh, you know, I appreciate what you're doing to improve here. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff. I was told that Mansion Hill HOA took down some trees up there a few years ago and changed that. Is that correct or incorrect?
That is correct. There was, uh, there was some roots that were uh, affecting the tennis courts. So those trees did have to come down in order for us to repair the tennis courts and bring them back to.
Nothing was replanted. There was no, no plantings done at that period of time, so.
There is a, there is a berm right now between uh, the police station and the tennis courts area where those trees will grow. Uh, from what we were told, they will get to a specific ten, I think maybe fifteen, twenty feet in height. So we're looking to uh, continue that uh, berm or the tree planting from where the tennis courts are to the uh, the clubhouse, which is towards uh, uh Manor Drive.
Thank you.
This is just sewer connection, not watering, correct?
Correct. Like, when I did the mock, uh, sewer connection fee, it was, I think it was thirty-three two, forty-three two, excuse me.
I just got forty thousand eight, I'm probably adding some.
Same, same ballpark.
I am having a hard time waiving double their cost for these trees that they cut. We did not remove the trees, they removed the trees. And I understand that was done prior to the blue car being built. I, I I'm not in favor of waiving double their cost. I'm not even in favor of waiving their full cost. Um, it would be different if we had cut all the trees and cleared the view. But we didn't.
With all due respect, though, you did put up a one hundred and sixty-foot tower in front of our property. So we're trying to, we're trying to mitigate some of that uh, from our association members who were there long before the police department in the tower.
The expectation that a owned piece of land with a privately or municipally would stay vacant for the view is unrealistic.
Were you, okay, sure. Understood.
Having said all that, I'm not opposed to partial, but not full. And certainly not double.
I, I can understand and agree.
But, but, do you know what but means? Forget everything I just said, the, this is what I really mean.
What I really mean is that, that a, no one else can put up a hundred. You know what I mean?
No one else needs to.
I'm just saying that, that, you know, you're saying that one. Someone else could use us. Something else could be done with that land.
They could put up a hundred and twenty-foot tower, easy enough, with a simple court order. All been done in town.
That's, that's true.
Absolutely. So, I mean, you don't pull the whole lot of water, I mean, a little.
I think for the town, personally, you know, work with the resident association, they want to work with us uh, to pay the twenty thousand dollars out of our body. We're still getting twenty-three, they're getting twenty back. Uh, I think that's, is, you know, taking care of our taxpayers. So it's my two cents worth. I'll be telling you, it's probably worth a bit.
Okay, no, seriously.
Yeah.
We just got an estimate on two bedroom. So it's a one bedroom. To put in a septic system. The estimate was just over five thousand dollars. And if you, five thousand times sixteen units, you're talking eighty thousand those, just a second. And in twenty, twenty-five years, you can activate that four more. I mean, and then in another twenty, twenty-five years, again, our tax fees are the biggest bang for your buck ever. As you pay a nominal fee one time only, ever. We are facing a sewer capacity crisis. I don't think we should waive all of the fees. Not even just the cost of the trees to replace trees that we didn't cut. We didn't touch them. We didn't cut them down. We didn't anything. I don't disagree that some of it, we got maybe half of their cost and waived that fee or whatever. I just can't agree with waving them. Especially when the if, if we're individual units, you're talking eighty thousand dollars a subject. I mean, I don't know what collective sector would be less than that, of course, but.
Just another perspective is when someone builds a new house or condo or whatever, somewhere else, it's brand new coming on, on, you know, they have, other than the land value, that you know, that, that, that property is not attributed to the taxes. Mansion Hill was built in the mid, late eighties. So forty years they've been contributing the same taxes, same tax rate as people who are on the sewer system. So they um aren't just brand new coming on. We have a forty-year history of collecting taxes on those properties, as if they had a sewer hookup. They pay the same as everyone else. I think that has to take into consideration too. I mean, someone who's been paying the full tax rate for forty years and, and not benefiting from this one thing could be given a, a break. And then, you know, I, I would be against waiving the fee, but I would be in favor of a, a twenty thousand dollar offset credit to, to this. And I, I agree with you, Jeff. I mean, it, it's, it's people not only have been paying taxes for forty years, it's people who live, many of those people uh, either live in the community or, or there's some out there, I know that rent those units and living in the community, and some of them are second-class owners or whatever.
The other thing about maintenance, Jeff, I mean, in addition to the initial fee, there's an ongoing fee on your own septic systems. They have to be drained, cleaned out. Sometimes, I don't know, Jeff, maybe you could tell us if any of them have been replaced up there. But we know there's an ongoing maintenance fee to get the sludge out of there, get the, you know, bacteria running the way it should to break down solids that go in there, some solids, whatever. So you know, I think waiving twenty thousand on the fee would be not suggested.
That the entire cost of the trees.
Well, it'd be then three hundred dollars.
I mean, I can say what I already said twice. I can say it again, but I won't bother. I disagree. I think ten thousand is more than enough. They pay half of their tree cost. And they don't have to redo this. They just have to hook up to to our sewer system.
All right, so you think ten?
Twenty.
Wait, let's see which my OJ goes.
Yep. And vote just to dollars towards whatever the total is for the uh sewer connection fee.
Up to twenty, if it's less than twenty.
I think you're missing the laundry of us.
I am, exactly. It was forty-three two. I'm almost lost. I didn't see it. Good call.
I'll second that motion.
All right, twenty thousand dollar offset to the
Up to, up to twenty.
Up to twenty, I guess. Planting them in less expensive. All right, motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? All right, Jeff, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you, Board. Appreciate it. Have a great night.
You too.
Thank you.
All right, um. Are we going into non-public? I have, I have an unpublicated personnel. I just wanted to run the litigation case too.
Okay.
To get them to ask a question. But I don't have any. Well, I'm going to ask you first.
Okay, uh, Jane, we had a problem with uh, Granicus's site or our site today. Did that get resolved?
No, Karina can answer that. Yeah, Jane's the one. Granicus sent out a renewal notice and only half of them are going through.
So for the payment side, really? I, I tried today. I sent this uh, whatever support request.
Yeah, so only about half of them are going through. We don't know why, um, because we had thirty or so go through today.
Did you?
Yeah, we, but we had, you know.
This problem before.
We had this problem last year. We had about a dozen. It looks at the, um, well, I don't, I, I don't know. We can't decipher it. So we did put in a support ticket with Granicus. We did put on the website and we did a, a newsflash saying you know, go, don't go to the, the website directly, Mansion Hill, we, how they have, yeah, so.
Was that sent out to the same group that got, got the bill?
I think it was the Frank and I emailed last. I think we did, I, I don't, I don't know exactly which Jane did. I don't know which.
It went to my email and I don't have there maybe or.
Send that to the Airbnb folks, or I'll just, if anyone who signed up for our newsflash, we send them out.
Yeah, let's send it to the people.
The Airbnb folks, um, and then we put it on the website, we put it on the front page of the website, and also we've worked with my little son. So hopefully that will slow people down. But yeah, we don't, like I said, we had thirty go through today and we had about a dozen.
See, it, it makes us look bad.
Oh, absolutely, that. And our contract with Granicus ends in April, so. Or we'll be, Jane's been doing some uh small kind of webinar things with other companies that do it.
Good.
Okay. Oh, good. Doing some research, doing some research on, you know, um, we might be moving to another property. Okay, it doesn't help us for twenty-sixth because we're already starting our new project, but at least we um, there are other options though. We're not going to sign into another contract without the issues being solved.
Well, that's, I mean, if you do sign up with Granicus, I'd like to hear a clause that says,
Yeah.
if renewal time comes, they got to send out these notices and if it doesn't work, it's got to be a huge penalty.
Yeah.
This, I mean, don't worry once, we can call it growing banks.
Right.
Two years in a row, this.
Is, I, I think so.
Yeah, all right. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. But speaking on that, um, can we, the board is part of them and you, get a number of how many of the um, Airbnb's are owned by town residents? And how many are owned by out-of-town residents? The reason why I ask that, I've looked at a number of different towns over there. And the numbers, uh, registered vary. Uh, some as high as four or five hundred dollars, some as high as a, a day's rent. Um, you know, and obviously that would increase the flow of cash into the town. I don't want to penalize locals, uh, and obviously we couldn't discriminate between locals and out-of-towns. But by the same token, if the ninety-nine percent of them are out of town that own these Airbnb's, um, they're making money off it. Please go back to the town.
Yeah, I mean, it would, you have to be just kind of our best guess. We have to go by where the tax laws mail. That's the only way we could
Okay.
Try to identify. So it might not be exact science, but it could be a, a good, good estimate.
I'd just like to see that. I know the rule of four hundred of the five steel, if I have it correctly, one hundred thirty bucks.
See, rather than trying to search through the tax database, Granicus, when you register.
We could just download the uh.
Who's the contact person on the owner record?
Well, a lot of, a lot of them have contact people that are property managers. Okay, but we can still, we can use the Granicus report, but we'd have to go by not the property manager, by the owner name to wear that on. It won't be that. But if you just, like I said, it won't be
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
Get the, pick the uh, payment system.
Uh, yeah, again, one, one other, uh, code enforcement officer and I took a ride through South Beach the other day. And we noticed, um, in, inordinate amount of, uh, it looks like sprinkler systems falling in of some type. And some of them were uh, slow drip. And there's no heads attached to that. Uh, so I think that's something that the planning board or what you look at. Uh, you know, if there's eight feet of hose that's going to slow drip the irrigation, somebody's got to be paying for that because it's water that's almost possibly utilized. It's not getting a barrage, so.
Beaters would, would tell you, if you had a beater or a spigot come out of the side of the house with the hose. It's right, it's right here. Let me, let me show you.
But anyways, um, you know, but Sean, Sean's on top of this. He's seeing where they're flagging them because now's the time that, obviously they're rolling them out. So they've got flags in there to see, you know, where they are. So he's been going around, um, checking. We took a little tour. Seems like you can tell by the real green lines, that's for damn sure. Uh, you know, that, uh, you know, but anyways, that's all I have.
That's a good point. Yeah, I, I mean, because everything we talked about is per head.
Off the window with the linear foot of drippage.
Yeah.
And that's buried, so you can't see it.
Right.
And it's part of a zone. So it's no different than a zone would come on and allow that water to flow for X amount of hours, drip, 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 drip. Until it shuts that zone off.
There are a lot of those in town.
There is. Yeah. I'm, I'm noticing more and more, like, you got one covered.
And I'm thinking, there's several small gardens in town. Just in, you know, residential houses.
Yeah, so I mean, some of the residential ones, the one-offs, I would say, like, you put a timer on your faucet outside, you put the hose through it, you let the thing do its thing, you know, that's one thing. When you're in a multi-zone system with twenty, thirty heads and you've got probably thirty more undergrounded, every plant has so many feet and there's forty plants. All these, they're running two one-inch main water supplies out of the house, down to the dome panel. And that's what the crew did, tell them when to do it by the block inside, so it's a significant amount of water being consumed here. You don't see anything.
Irrigation head.
Right. The only thing that triggered that would be a meetup or, or a hole out that's telling them what to do. Or you rely on the honesty of the installer to tell you, yeah, I put so many heads in and so many linear feet of uh, drippage in. Which I'm going to tell you is probably very minimal right now. These guys just throw them in everywhere.
That's something we hadn't even thought about or considered, but.
Yeah.
Try to figure out what would be an appropriate kind of comparison as far, you know, like if ten linear, the first ten linear feet or the first two, three, ten or something, you know, like.
There could be some attributable gauge off a number of plants. Thirty plants in there and then each one's going to take at least a foot of drippage to take care of the root base, then you've got thirty feet, something like that. I, I don't know, you know?
We'll do a little bit more investigating and see if we can find, maybe if any other community does a Bible fee versus cricket head or something, just to give us an idea of what will even be worth.
They're actually making flower bars like that now. Are they? Yeah, with a tube in them. And it's got a wick coming out of the base and you just keep the, the tube filled as the plant falls full of water, the wick lets it come out. It's not overflowing, I've got two of them on my house, so I don't have to. Yeah. So you don't water on the top, you just water the tube.
Yeah. Well, we can do a little more research, maybe circle back to that.
Yeah, yeah, just something.
Maybe something. While we're talking about sprinkler systems, so uh, we were recently challenged uh, by a developer, uh, While we're talking about sprinkler systems, so, uh, we were recently challenged, uh, by a developer, uh, about sprinkler systems. Not receiving the penalty if you're not pulling a permit for them to, you know, how we, you know, we, uh, implemented the, the penalty. This past year, or beginning of this year, that if you don't pull a permit for a building permit, you get a twenty-five percent penalty on the. Cost of fees associated with it, if we catch you doing work without a permit. We had a developer challenge us that that doesn't count towards sprinkler heads, and I guess I'm looking for confirmation from the board of select, and that. Any work, including a sprinkler system install, would be considered in that penalty.
Any work, my, I mean, do we need to make a separate paragraph?
Uh, irrigation system language to the cost of bee worksheet, in addition to the water and sewer tap fee worksheet, thinking that. That has all of our permit prices on it, that it would be pretty clear that if it was on that sheet, that it would be included in the land use permit. Uh, but we were, like I said, recently challenged for that, so. Um, if I could just maybe.
I'll answer that challenge for you.
If I could just maybe get confirmation from the board that it is that it included a cost of new construction.
Absolutely.
Job is gonna be complete, complete, not add-on, see if they ever would have, so, um, you know.
Yeah, ab- absolutely.
When you said you were challenged, I mean, was, did they take your word, or are we gonna go to the next step, we're gonna go to court, um?
Check, yeah, so we'll see, um, but it was, you know, obviously. It was elevated to my level, I'll say, it went from staff level to now with CC myself on it, so, um. It's good to know that I have the board's support, and, I mean, yeah, of course you do, there, there's so many things happening.
In this town, growth-wise, and, and you're doing a great job, but you can't.
It's hard to keep up with it.
True, everything can keep up with every, every project you dump, and if, and if someone says, no, we don't have a sprinkler system, and then all of a sudden they do.
Yeah.
What's the difference between adding or putting in a bathroom, or, hey, you know, agree, you know, I put it in a hotel, but not gonna tell anyone? You know, I, I just.
See, I don't think I use CCs at the end to get the audit, to see what the case may be. I go through my start the water meetup, and I look, is there any slants for those holes, there's nothing, go outside. You know, take the picture, the outside, do the inside, when I'm outside, I look around to see if there's anything outside that would replicate irrigation. Like something off the side of the building, or a clock, whatever, okay, it tells me, and then let's go get it, a lot of boxes are not there. Two weeks, month, four months, sometimes maybe six months, okay, they're going in left and right. I'm gone, they got what they needed, they decided they wanted to put it in afterwards. Okay, well, who's doing it, is it the guy doing it here, is it the homeowner, or is it GC? He got a lot of finger pointing going on, so, okay, guys, knock it off, if you're here, after we sign it off, you're working for the homeowner. You know?
Right, and stab.
The homeowner should be pulled a permit, and if the homeowner is engaged with a GC, then the homeowner should be putting the GC on the sled saying. I'm doing the job.
Either way, there should be a permit pulled.
There should be a permit, and so be adding costs to the town.
Absolutely, yeah.
It's like, one of the other things that we noticed Sean pointed out, going around, is that, you know, on the ALCs. That when there should be, what, five feet of stone along the driveways, and three feet deep, or two feet deep. It's two feet wide, and what about two, two inches, three inches, you're, boy, you're being kind.
Yeah. Well, Greg Corbin will be on site tomorrow doing.
Yeah.
So, I think we'll have a thorough list of things that need to be addressed, um, after each part.
Where's he doing inspections?
With, with Sean.
But, but on places that are, um, have a pending or application for not.
Uh, strong, I have, uh, yeah, that are, are in, during construction, yeah, haven't received an UCC yet, but are in construction.
Okay.
We did measure the bridge to find that the fire truck will get out of it.
Oh, good.
Bill. We, we don't think, Scott Maselli's going forward, a female he has stating the crown clearance at the sides and the side. So you have both.
He said he reached out to Mike during that process.
It's gonna be interesting to see the churn there, too. The turn, when that started going straight up to the island, and when you go to the right to those homes down there. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's gonna be interesting.
Yay, so I have, but I have anything else?
Oh, that's it.
The only thing I have is our Linwood varsity girls, they have the playoffs, they're in the, yeah, very cool, it's the final. Four, the seventh day of tomorrow in Laconia, if they win that, when, when they win that game, they go to. Final, um, Saturday, which is very cool, I think, and Tammy, you may know, I think this is the first time that we. When we win on Saturday, it will be the first championship since oh three, wow, for the girls. Which I think, I don't know the exact date.
Very cool, been quite some time.
Chris, my oldest was on that team in two thousand and three when they won, so I know that, I don't think there's been a.
Sounds like the bread sauce.
Yeah, no kidding, and the cool thing about it is, like, our girls, we're very small pool, very small. Right now, I think we've got one sub on the bench, that we've had so many injuries. Um, and one playing in a leg brace, knee brace, too, and doing very well. Um, the tiny schools that we're playing against teams, but are. Yeah, I think it's Lundy Dairy Christian that we play, uh, tomorrow. Um, and, well, Lisbon just beat Conover Christian, which was, so, and they're playing Littleton. Whoever wins that, okay, then tomorrow's game, but there's some big school, private schools that recruit and give soccer scholarships and. And, and we're number three in the state, with Conover Christian, Lundy Dairy Christian, and, so, you're on.
So are the top public schools, too.
Oh, yeah. Kicking butt to our hospital, so I just. Yeah, yeah, they've been doing really, really well, I'm super proud of. Um, Heidi Corin, Jeff Krill.
Ryan.
Ryan Lee. Yeah, yeah, and they only, we live two seniors on the team. I think we only, oh, no, we're three, we're three.
There's Patty, Aubrey, Dana.
Yeah.
I think there is one more.
Is there, well, there could be one more, they needed, we have a lot of soccer, ton of soccer. I'm telling you, I'm telling you, we're gonna live this year, next year, following here. Yeah, they're doing really well, and the girls are playing amazing, so. Just like. That's all I have.
Alright, um, I don't really have any questions, I just had one, one comment was, uh, the. Town staff put together a pretty thorough, extensive list of, uh. Discussion or ideas for, for the planning board, look at regarding either new ordinances or rules, not, not rules procedure, but. Or, uh, procedure of the, the planning process, uh, good, good job with that.
Well, that's great.
Yeah, yeah, well, congratulations, thank you to Jake, doing that, that's been very helpful, I think that's one of the. Planning board has laughed his, uh. Connection with what's going on here, to know, like, what changes, like, some of them that listen, like, would never be on my radar, yeah.
Well, it's real time, stuff that we've been running into.
You, you don't.
Change.
Right, that makes sense, but you can't do it.
Right.
Um, well, let's make it so they can do it, or you can do it, so, okay, so anyway, just wanna say thank you to the town staff.
So it does bridge the gap between, like, rulemaking and then how you implement the rules, you know, like.
Right, right.
Sometimes in theory, it seems like it makes sense, but when you try to practically, it doesn't make sense, or, or by person, you know, so. Um, we'll pass them along.
Alright, and with that, I'll open up for public participation, Carrie.
You want me to come up there?
Please come up.
Just very minor, but, um, excuse me, I don't mean to put my back to you. In the past, so. In the past, um, I believe it was asked, there was some kind of a mirror coming off Church Street. And then I believe it might have been Jack that said it wasn't necessary at the time, but since this new building has gone in. If I stop at that white line, I can't see Main Street or anything coming from the west side. So, I am just asking, thinking, even whether they do or they don't do any shrubbery in front of this building to enhance it. The visibility is very poor, coming out to go down towards post office. So I'm asking if the town can reconsider possibly putting a mirror there, I'm not one for signs everywhere, mirrors everywhere, but in this case. It's been dangerous for me, because people can't see if I'm coming down, I'm just using me as an example, if I'm coming down church onto Main. They're swooping in on the drive, on the one coming down, instead of going up on their own. On their own part of the road, so it's almost been a fender bender a few times. And, you know, it won't help, I don't think it would help somebody on Main Street going up Church Street, but coming down Church Street onto Main Street. The visibility just isn't there, and if I have my car versus my husband's truck, just the nose of it and everything. Is still not there, and going through my daughter's driver's ed course with her again. Uh, Mr. Dusset made it very clear, that if an officer wants to stop you, they can stop you. And cite you if you go beyond that white line, that you're supposed to be stopping at, but right now, where that white line is. You don't have a lot of visibility, depending on what kind of vehicle you have, and I don't know what, you know, the regulations are for where that white line's placed or not. Um, I believe the mill front is their domain, but even if you're going. Main entrance in and out of the post office, if you have a small car, you can see through that, underneath that sign, that there's a car coming, but if I have my husband's truck. I cannot see where that white line is, I cannot see if anybody's coming this way, so those are some safety concerns I have. Um, I don't know what else we'd be there to offer, other than a mirror. But I myself have almost got into collisions by people cutting off going up Church Street, and also I can't see, you got somebody jogging by. You know, they're supposed to look, but they're jogging by, they're on their mission, I don't wanna kill anybody. So, that, that's why I came here tonight, I just had that concern, and I know it's already been remedied here, but. I live near the police department, when the leaves fall off the trees, you see the tower. That, anybody that's up on the upper levels of the condos, my sister-in-law used to live in one of the condos. There's still not a few of that tower, no matter what you plant for trees, and depending on the type of trees you got, the leaves are gonna fall off in the fall. I personally, the building, it's a beautiful building, the tower, we get used to. You know, I mean, life goes on, there's more important things that need to be worried about, in my opinion, um. And I used to walk my dogs, right, my horse, you know, the police department, and there were all kinds of trees there. But like the guy said, they removed them, so, I'm wanting to decide on this one, you know, I mean, they. Made their decision by self-choice, so I don't understand why the towns should be paying so much for something that they already removed. Because those trees, I'm gonna prevent that tower from being seen, and I'm right across on it, so. That's just my opinion, and I'm just trying to put it out there, and lastly, are we still in a water band?
Um, I talked to Nate about that today, and I think plans on lifting it, but technically, yes, but it, it could be off by tomorrow morning.
Well, if you look at my lawn, you know, I have not been.
Maybe it's just the state line. The state line is, uh, our fire ban is, uh.
Right.
Uh, but.
I totally assumed that that was everything.
No, Nate and I.
Question, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, no, Nate and I discussed it this morning, and he was just gonna go back and talk to our water operator, Dave, and make sure that. He was on board with it, and that we were most likely lifting it, so, like I said, technically, no, but.
I mean, they haven't.
Should be gone by tomorrow morning, so.
I have a dog bowl out there for whatever comes around to drink in the morning, so I do take and dump that onto my roses, and I can't wash it now. I wash it out real quick with a scrubby and fill it up again, so the birds and squirrels and shit will have their water.
What about the foxes, you seen the box?
I've seen them around, but I've had so much going on in my life that the mother got killed.
Oh.
On the interstate, up behind the police department, um, probably two months ago, she got killed. So, I talked to Fish and Game when I went up to Lancaster Fair, and the guy said to me, normally, the mates. Stay together, so he said, chances are the dad's still around, um, but he said. Don't have them removed, nature will run its course, they were with the mom, from what I'm figuring, about four or five months. He said they'll either survive or they won't, but to put them to, like, a science center or somewhere like that, that's devastating, he said, leave them alone. So, on occasion, I see them, but. I'm torn, you know, the mom died, so what do you do? You know, um, we did have a coyote for a while, but we haven't had him around anymore, he was more of my concern, but, cause I have little dog, or a little dog. Um, but I welcome that, too, you know, nature is nature, I mean, nature's lover, so, anything that walks in my yard is. Welcome there, so, animalized.
I don't remember, um, this, this concept about the, the, there are, yes, that.
Yeah, I, it was early spring, I thought I heard you say before this, or it could have even been last year, cause I'm sporadic, I'm coming here, but. I believe somebody had asked in the past for a mirror to be put on Main Street, and it might not have been on Church Street, it might have been somewhere else. Um, and I think you had said, I'm pretty sure, if you had said that it, you know, wasn't necessary at the time.
If it's public safety, that's not my daily work, I think that deals with, uh, the chief and or Nate.
Right, right, right.
Really taking a look at it, and then giving us a report, and us following their direction.
Yeah.
But I mean, if it's true safety, and it's gonna, you know, stop somebody getting hurt.
Right.
Or severely injured or killed, I mean, absolutely.
Oh, no, I, I understand that, and this building was not there then, you know, now that it's been constructed. And if they do put shrubbery around, if they put the high, like, cedar trees or something in front, I, whatever they use is still gonna hinder. Because even a little shrub, if you have a, a small. You're not gonna have that visibility, um, you know, if I get hurt, that's my little kid on a bicycle. Kid, kid and stuff, they need visibility, you know, I'm almost sixty-four, I still be, my business is low, I can cover. Well, so anyway, that's what I came here for, mainly to ask about, um. The, the mirror, and I don't know what other options there are, there might be something else.
Yeah, fortunately, I think DOT's right away, right?
I was gonna say, is that DOT, right?
It's all DOT, right, so we, it would definitely have to go through that.
Have to go through DOT.
Yeah, well, I'm curious now, I wanna go drive to both of those stops and pay attention, let's see.
Well, when, when you come out?
See, when I come out of the mill, I never go left, I, oh, cause I live on this.
Turn left, I go to the right, all very difficult.
I don't think I, honestly, I think I ever do, I can go the other way, cause I live this.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna have to pull up there, make a left and pay attention.
Well, I take my dogs for right all the time, so you better go around the block.
And then I wanna do the same on Church Street, now that you mentioned it, I want.
Yeah, it's coming down onto Main.
Yeah.
But if you look where that white line is. And you try to stop there, I'm coming down on Main, it is.
Know exactly what you're talking about, I have the creep out.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, the school street.
And then in my car, coming out of, out of the, I call it the mill still.
Yeah.
Coming out of the main entrance, if I'm going left, I'm low enough that I can see through underneath the sign, if there's anything coming. But if I'm in Bill's truck, I can't tell, so I'm going beyond that white line, and I'm putting my notes out there. Well, time to change.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to do it just to see.
Yeah, yeah, so that's all I was here for. Harmless, just.
Thank you.
You want this on?
We can leave it off. Trying to do something?
Well, thank you.
Maybe we can get Angel or somebody to get a hold of DOT, and it could go through the way we can whip these up a bit.
Just the white line.
The white line, yeah.
I'm thinking it would be the solution, you put white line.
Yeah. Maybe a couple, because of the waters, you know, I'm sure that, that's set in their way, but. Uh, reality is here, too, it's not just here, it's everywhere, so.
I definitely know it is DOT, because remember when. DOT had to put it. DOT had to put it in.
Yeah, it's definitely DOT.
DOT's property, I think actually DOT property goes back to where the sidewalk uh ends. Like beyond.
Beyond, yeah.
Beyond the building.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Tickets are all bad, right.
But I'm thinking they might be more minimal moving that white line.
Moving the white lines up a little bit. I was gonna say, and then, but yeah, and then get the crosswalk, yeah.
Like you get the same thing up at the the uh the new hotel going up there, we got DOT in there. Some of those issues creeping up back there too.
Interesting. Look anyway.
Good. The other thing I just thought of, we talked about parking on connector Road along the school field.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, can I just remind you to. Thank you, just on the.
Why you wanna go with DOT?
Yeah, well, you don't call them, just a lot of, just inside by the field, so.
You know, I took a look at that after, it is a bike path, there's a bike lane there.
There's a fence.
No, I know, there's a fence, there's a walking lane.
Walking lane.
And then there's like, then there's a bike lane on the asphalt, yeah, so that may be difficult. Uh I took a look at it after you were attached to it. Yep, very familiar with that, I'm sure, Tammy, right?
Yep, I parked there way in, it's fine.
When I was growing up, we used to always park.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, the soccer field. They did paint the bicycles on the road, you know, bike lane. And then the walking path in front of Lincoln Green in the school field was supposed to be strictly for foot travel. And then my mother-in-law, who used to go to the Bel Air Green, complained about bicycles. Going on the, on the footpath, um. So it's marked right now, no bicycles, but a lot of parents would take their toddlers out and let them learn safely away from the traffic. On that footpath, so. I personally would take the sign off the footpath and. Most people that are riding bikes have respect to pull over anyways to somebody walking.
Well, we had that whole discussion.
But then when we put the sidewalk in front of the road. Uh yeah, that was part of that whole.
That discussion, yeah, with with biking and no biking on that sidewalk. And our position was. To put up the signs and say no bike riding, because the problem was not the. Four or five-year-old was trying to learn how to ride a bike, and the problem was the teenagers zipping up and down and and.
And there was a woman that used to sit on the path in front of Lincoln Green and paint with an easel or a chair.
They didn't talk to her about.
Yeah, was difficult, sorry.
And she had a kid, anyway, the decision was to put up a sign, and then if a parent is out there with their six-year-old, okay, we're not gonna arrest the six-year-old kid.
Right.
Let them learn where it's safe, but once they can ride their bike and they're gonna start annoying people or flying by people, you know, get out of the bike. So. Um with that, I'll make a motion, not public, to discuss a personnel issue and a legal update.
I'll listen to you.
Hi.
Hi.
Great, good night, thank you.